I'd like to call this meeting order, roll call.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. Scott. I hear. Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Deroff.
Present.
Mrs. Kratz.
Here.
Mr. Pennarello.
Here. If we could all rise for the pleasure of leading, send a moment of silence. There were no previous executive sessions to report?
Takes us to our recognition showcase, and I'd like to share that we have Abigail Dawson here in attendance this evening, a CTE Presidential Scholar nominee, and I'd like to read a little bit of bio in regards to Abigail and why we are recognizing her this evening. So this evening, Abigail Dawson, a senior from Boyertown High School and a standout in Burke's Career and Technical Center, BCTC, their video and media content production program has achieved a remarkable honor. She is a nominee for the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program, selected as one of only five nominees from Pennsylvania and one of 105 across the nation. Her nomination highlights her exceptional talent and dedication to her craft. The U.S. Presidential Scholars Program, established in 1964 by executive order, recognizes and honors the nation's most distinguished high school seniors. Initially focused on academic excellence, the program expanded in 1979 to include students excelling in the visual, creative, and performing arts, and again in 2015 to celebrate students achieving distinction in career and technical education. Each year, up to 161 students are named Presidential Scholars, marking one of the highest honors a high school student can achieve. This nomination underscores Abigail's commitment to excellence in media production and her potential as a future leader in the field. BCTC and the Boyertown Area School District are proud to support her journey and look forward to seeing her continued success. And having had a conversation with Abigail just a few minutes ago, would you like me to announce, or are you going to announce this when we bring you to the podium?
Oh, sure. I've actually today committed to Cutts Town University.
Abigail, we're gonna have you step over to the podium, and I'm gonna have Mr. Sparks come over there with you, and he has a few comments to make, but I want you to make your announcement first.
Just today, I'm not even kidding, like 20 minutes ago in the car, I finally committed to Cutts Town University. I'm gonna be in their video media content production program, and I'm hopefully gonna get a really nice internship.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Did you want to talk about your program at BCTC?
Oh, sure, I'd love to. At BCTC, I've been a part of, yet again, the video media content production program for about three years now. Throughout that time that I've been at BCTC, I have been a part of numerous productions, live productions, radio productions, all sorts of stuff. I could really get into the weeds about it, but I'm pretty sure most of you guys, you know, would rather not hear about every single thing I've done there, because I've done a lot. I've been, my main focus at BCTC is live video production. So what I do is stuff like Saturday Night Live. I make a production, I make all of the set stuff for that production, I set it up, me and my team, we go in for about like a week or two, we set it all up, we do a rehearsal, we do it, and we're done. It's a lot of fun, it's just the thrill of the moment, being able to do something so like intricate and everything has to fit together. It's like putting together a puzzle with 10,000 people watching you. It's a lot, but it's something that I really enjoy and something I found a passion for when I was in middle school, actually. And then I had been so surprised when I found a video program that our high school had offered through Burke's Career, because it's a niche, and I'm aware of that. It's very, very hard to find a video program that is as important and as prestigious as our one at BCTC. And I'm really grateful toward BCTC and toward Boyertown for giving me that opportunity, because I know it is difficult to get the buses all the way out into Lee'sport, it's a 45-minute drive, and I understand that it takes a lot. And I'm really appreciative that I was given such a great opportunity that got me to this point, so I'm very grateful.
Abigail, you're obviously a very deserving student, and we appreciate all the hard work that you did at BCTC. On behalf of the school board, as well as the high school, we have a few things to recognize your accomplishments. We have a certificate of recognition for you, as well as this awesome mug with Gobert, so you take this at Cutts Town with you when you're walking to class and keep you warm. And Mrs. Moyer actually has something for you too, as well. So, one other thing that she's involved with, and this kind of goes back for our planning for Monday, is NJRTC. And on Monday, we're having our annual inspection at 9 o'clock in the new auditorium entrance, you'll be coming in into the Bear Gym, so we're really looking forward to that and looking forward to you. And parents, thank you both for coming out and being here for Abigail tonight, we appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
If any board members have any comments, certainly to Abigail, you're more than welcome to share those at this time. Congratulations again, Abigail.
Yeah, just want to wish you congratulations and good luck over there in Cutts Town.
I'm sure wherever you go, you'll make a difference. You're quite an individual, you just blew me away. Parents, congratulations, you did a great job.
Dr. David Heiser, would we like to share some of Abigail's work?
We certainly would. And we were hoping for the introduction to these two different videos that we wanted to share this evening. So anybody watching at home or virtually, these links are attached inside the agenda, but Mrs. Moyer is going to open them up separately. So Abigail, why don't you give us the introduction to, actually to both of those, and then we'll run those back to back.
So the two videos that I brought for you all today, one is for our PSA for our national line for teen suicide. It's a PSA that we've made about hiking and how hiking relates to, you know, the troubles and tribulations that are, you know, mental health, and how there's ups and downs, and you can get through it eventually, but sometimes we need a little bit of help. That's my first video, PSA about mental health. And then the second one is a lyric video that I had made to a song to showcase my skills in editing. Yeah, those are the two videos.
Okay, well, we're gonna share the first PSA.
Finding our way through life can be challenging at times. Expectations, relationships, trying to fit in, and anxiety, they can all weigh us down, making each step you take just that much harder. We keep pushing ourselves to keep going while making little time to stop and relax. But we cannot keep pushing ourselves, ignore our responsibilities, and putting off our mental health. We worry about being a burden to others, if they will judge us, look down on us, or if they would even help us. But even when you think there is no one there, someone will come along to help carry the load that life places on us. It might be difficult at first to drop the baggage on your shoulders, but having someone there to help makes lifting that burden that much easier. If you're struggling to carry yourself, call or text 988 to help lift the load off your back.
I look into your eyes and I think back to the sun of mine. You're as old as heroes when I left for war. Will these actions haunt my days? Every man I've slain is the price I pay, endless pain. Close your eyes and spare yourself the view. How could I hurt you? I'm just a man who's trying to go home, even after all the years away from what I've known. I'm just a man who's fighting for his life. Deep down, I would trade the world to see my son and wife. I'm just a man. But when does a cabbage become a meteor? When does a candle become a blaze? When does a man become a monster? When does a ripple become a tidal wave? When does the reason become the blame? When does a man become a monster? When does a cabbage become a meteor? When does a candle become a blaze? When does a man become a monster? Forgive me. When does a man become a monster? Forgive me. I'm just a man.
So why don't you give us a little background, talk to us a little bit about the time it took in, obviously, the second one, more editing, right?
Yes, so the purpose of the first one was actually a PSA contest for Pennsylvania in general. They had a 988 contest where they had a bunch of CTE students from across the world, not even world, across, you know, the United States, come together and try and make PSAs for their respective states. There's also like a poster edition, and we do have some of those posters in our school. They have that up so people can, you know, acknowledge that teens do understand what's going on and that we want to help, and there's people on their side. That's why we had participated in the PSA program. One, I really do make, I want to make sure that people know that mental health is a real problem, especially for teenagers with this new time. There's so much technology around that makes people see so many different things, either that they shouldn't, or so many people are seeing you. It's, it's a lot, and I understand that. Being a teenager myself in the age of technology, I feel like I'm being perceived a lot, even now, I'm on camera, for, I have no idea how many people to see. But it's really important that mental health is shared, and it's important that you talk to your peers, teachers, or trusted adults, that, you know, you're explaining that this is important to you. For my second one, that was a video edit project to epic Troy saga, "Just a Man." It's a story about Odysseus and his travels. Yeah, I had done that edit, because that one took like a week for me to do. It was a part of a project where we were learning about different types of fonts in our school. We had to learn about fonts and track mats, which is why you saw the video under the text, just different editing techniques that you could use. And it's something that really stuck with me, because, you know, editing is fun, it's fun to put stuff together that becomes eventually something bigger. Putting little pieces together and seeing your project develop over time is just a really satisfying process, and then seeing other people's reactions to it is also really nice. Yeah. Thank you very much for watching my videos.
Wonderful, thank you for sharing this evening, and congratulations.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
We wish you all the best, thank you.
Student representing report.
Good evening, board members and meeting attendees. We are excited to bring some elementary and high school updates this month. This month marks a start of a special time of the year for many BASH clubs, fundraising February. To show their commitment to service, many clubs have worked diligently to advertise new fundraisers each week. Key Club hosted the MLK sock drive in which students could donate socks, sandwich crackers, and granola bars to local men's shelters. SAD Club hosted a diaper drive to provide new diapers, pacifiers, and infant care items to Safe Burke, the domestic violence and assault center, from February 10th to February 14th. FBLA hosted a canned food drive from February 18th to 21st. Student Council is hosting a coin stall in which teachers will have to temporarily stall class to count coins, providing funds for the FBLA Memorial Fund.
March, March 22nd marks an exciting day at BASH with a lineup of family-friendly activities for all to enjoy during the 18th Annual Wellness Fair. From 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the high school will be full of exciting events as students, families, and community members come together for a day of fun. The annual Community Impact Walk and Running of the Bears will kick off the event, bringing out runners and walkers of all ages. Meanwhile, our elementary's young culinary stars will showcase their skills in the Kid's Celebrity Chef Competition, and various vendors will offer entertainment, food, and activities for the whole family.
Practices for BASH's musical "Once Upon a Mattress" are in full swing. The cast is so excited to bring together this production and are working tirelessly to make it a success. As someone who is in the ensemble, I can best describe it as exhausting but nonetheless rewarding. The opening show will take place on Thursday, March 13th, and is followed up by three more shows on the following days. The shows on Friday and Saturday will also be at 7:00 p.m., but the Sunday show will begin at 2:00 p.m. We hope to see you there.
This month's elementary highlight, Gilbertsville Elementary, has been busy with hands-on learning and community spirit. This month's discovery table, located in the main lobby, explores football, letting students try on gear, learn Roman numerals, and check out artifacts. Students have also been participating in the book bowl, reading their way to a touchdown, and wrapping up an item drive for Preston's pantry, with donations revealing the school's Super Bowl pick. Next month, the third grade chorus concert on March 18th will showcase the students' musical talents for family and friends. Thank you to Gilbertsville Principal, Mrs. Petrie, for the updates.
BASH's TSA is hosting its exciting designer bag bingo on March 22nd from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Keystone Flower Company. With over 30 designer bags up for grabs, attendees can enjoy an afternoon of bingo, raffles, and great food. Tickets are $35, don't miss your chance to win big while supporting TSA.
We look forward to bringing you more of BASH's best moments next month, as well as highlights from New Hanover Elementary School. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Liliana and Allison, and Allison, good luck to you in the production, production next month. Any questions for our student representatives? Thank you very much for sharing.
There's no one signed up for public comp period number one, so at this time, we'll be looking for the approval of the February 11th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
Zawada moves.
I'll second.
Ms. Nyman.
My vote is still a no until we get more information into the minutes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Deroff.
No.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Mr. Pennarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're also looking for the approval of the February 18th, 2025 Special Meeting Policy Facilities Minutes.
Zawada moves.
Ms. Nyman.
Saying this the last one.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy. Ms. Deroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Mr. Pennarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That takes us down to item number seven, discussion and information, and we do have two informational updates this evening for the board. The first is just a strategic planning update. Last Tuesday, the Boyertown Area School District Strategic Planning Committee met for its first session. We had over 100 participants across six different stakeholder groups that met in an initial meeting. The meeting's purpose was really to get a baseline for everybody that was participating, and dividing groups up, about 23 members in each group, who shifted around to five different focus areas. And within those focus areas, we had cabinet members that shared information regarding the school district, some things that were key components that they thought all stakeholders should know and somewhat understand. And we shifted those groups around to all the different five focus areas, and worked on an activity of just getting an idea from each of the participants about something that maybe resonated with them, that they may have heard about, that they knew, and something that, after listening and hearing that particular session in that focus area, there's something that they may have learned that evening. Our goal is to come back in the second meeting, which will be next month, and to take from that the themes that were generated from those two activities, from those activities, bringing them back to compare those against what you see as a board members, you see hanging here in the board meeting room, which is the vision and mission and current goals, to suggest whether or not we need to adjust any of that vision and mission, or expand upon some of the things that are there, based on some of the things that they've heard and learned, and we'll have some other activities in meeting two. Ultimately, the strategic plan is intended to really create a vision for the school district across the next five years. And inside that plan will be goals and action steps needed to attempt to meet that vision that the Strategic Planning Committee commits to. And our goal is, by the end of June, at our last board meeting in June, that we will bring back a strategic plan to this board for its consideration and recommendation for approval. So again, it will include vision, mission, goals, action steps, metrics to measure those goals, and really hope to inform our community and all of our stakeholders about what the vision across the next five years is intended to be. There is on the website, and Mrs. Moyer has put that page up, there is an existing landing page. We have sent information out to the community with regard to that landing page, gives a little introduction. It also then gives the multiple presentations that were done throughout the five focus areas, so those slide decks that are there, along with my initial PowerPoint that helped with the introduction. In addition to that, within the next couple of days, by the end of this week, we will be sharing out all the data that came from the community surveys, so all the different stakeholder group surveys will be listed there. We're putting together the instructions of how to view those right now, and we should have those prepared in the next, the next few days, so that those will be there for our community to witness. And actually, Mrs. Moyer already pulled up some existing, that stakeholder group is, what stakeholder group is that? That is our support staff stakeholder group. And you can see some of the visuals that will appear as it reflects the data from the questions. We do, the way the data has to be shared, there is some hovering, and we want to make sure that we're giving the necessary instructions to our folks in regards to that. But the display is a little bit different than just each question there, you're gonna have to hover over some of those questions to be able to understand what that data is. So we'll have that prepared now for our full community by the end of this week, and make sure we're messaging. Any questions from the board with regard to any of that? Okay. So our second item is gold cards. So I have asked our athletic director, Mr. Palladino, to come this evening. Each of you here at the board, at your seats, have been issued a gold card, and you may be asking, well, what is this for? So we want to better inform our community about what these are and what's the intent in regards to the gold cards and who qualifies for those.
Thank you, Dr. David Heiser. So our gold card program that the district and the athletic department has in conjunction with one another is anyone who is a retiree of the Boyertown School District or a resident of the district age 62 or older is eligible for a gold card. What the gold card gets you is free admission into all of our regular season athletic contests and concerts, things like that, put together by the music department. There are a few events that it does not cover, things like the Spring Musical because of royalties involved, or any playoff game because Boyertown does not quote-unquote "host" that game, it's hosted by the state or the league. But the gold card is good for games at Boyertown and any other school in the Pioneer Athletic Conference. So if you have a gold card, you can go to Potts Grove Spring Ford, go to a game there, show them your gold card, they will accept that, just like we accept their gold cards from their schools. So to get a gold card, easiest way is you can go to the Boyertown ASD website, scroll down to athletics, then on the left side, there's a gold card electronic application, get sent right to me. We process those every Friday morning. There's a gold card, I believe, on your table in front of you, it's just a little plastic credit card, we print those out, we send them out to whoever signs up. If they don't have access to electronic version, they can just call us, we can take their information over the phone, or at a lot of our events, we have paper copies there that we can hand out. Right now, we have 599 members of the Gold Club. So we, people do use it a lot, and it's, it's great to get everybody out, feel part of the community, they like seeing the kids, they're supportive, they hit up the concession stand, they help out, you know, in those other ways also. So, anybody have any questions about the Gold Club program? It's been, I don't have an exact year, but I've been here, I've been in this spot for 11 years now, and it's, it's been rolling before that. Some of the cards we save, somebody brings one in, they used to be old cardboard ones, and they look through, they've been through a war, they used to just handwrite on them, so it's been a while, it's been a while.
I think it dates back to the 1980s.
My electronic version that I have now, the spreadsheet, is only, it only goes back to 2014, and I believe that's when I came in and we converted some stuff electronic. So I knew Mrs. Gerton, who was in the department, and Mr. Endy, they were doing them then, so it's been, it's been a while.
All I can say that the conditions that used to be on the gold card were so long as it was imposed by the then-business manager, that most people couldn't figure out when they could use those cards.
Well, recognition of our board and your service. Absent of you having to show proof of qualification, each of you have received that card this evening. So thank you, Mr. Palladino, and please, if you're hearing this this evening, make sure you spread the word about these gold cards. Thank you. So that takes us down to our financial reports section, and we do have both a general fund snapshot there for viewing purposes. Mrs. Denacole, do you want to report out on anything with regard to that?
The general fund snapshot is just being provided to the board on a monthly basis, so they see what the, you guys can see what the fund balance is each and every month. The fund balance won't change much throughout the year, because the books are only closed out on an annual basis, so you will see the biggest update after the June closing of the books.
That takes us to item B, then, Treasurers' Report, and we have Ms. Fox here this evening to share out.
Hello, good evening tonight. I'm going to be presenting to you highlights from the January 2025 Treasurers' Report. Local revenue, delinquent tax collection was approximately $64,515.35. Earned income tax was approximately $1,186,093.44. And transfer tax collection was approximately $141,071.90. And for state revenue, we received pupil transportation subsidy for $423,664. Non-public transportation subsidy was approximately $97,213. And special education subsidy was approximately $768,815. And this month for expenditures, salaries, benefits, and professional services accounted for about 83% of our monthly expenditures. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
At this point, we're looking for a motion to accept the treasurer's report, as is.
At this point, we're looking for a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report as is. Dieroff moves. Roger, second.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Takes us to our superintendent's consent agenda, and the three settlement agreements that had been provided to you at our last meeting and in your weekly are listed there. We are going to be seeking approval of the consent agenda.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Takes us down into the superintendent's report, the itemized agenda. Item A, there is an overnight trip for your consideration. Board's practice is to ratify this trip taken by students. This is a trip that is via qualification, in which students participated through, through our BASH choirs. It is the Region Five Chorus Festival, and we do have five students that have qualified to the region competition, on which there will also be one chaperone.
Zawada moves.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms... Oh, sorry.
Is there a mistake going here? The student rooms are $50, but for a chaperone, it's $180. Is that a mistake?
No, it's not. It's a discount that's afforded those students through the, through the region. Through PMEA.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under item B, we are seeking and recommending approval of the RFP for the analysis of demographics, growth patterns, enrollment study that you see listed there. We had talked about this at our most recent Committee of Hull meeting. There was some feedback, some changes were made. One of the larger changes Mrs. Nyman had made, we did change on page eight of the document where it had originally said estimated time length necessary to complete. We did change the language to expected date of completion and submission to the owner. So we did change that information. And again, just to go back and give a summary of this particular recommendation is that, you know, we're at a point in time where we're 13 years since our last full enrollment study. We're at the point in time where the board has asked us to investigate full-day kindergarten. We know, based on some of the needs in some of our buildings with regard to reaching some capacity levels, and we really believe at this point in time it would behoove us and the district to go out for a study on our enrollment projections across the next 10 years to help guide us as we investigate over the next coming years situationally as to what some things, what are some of the things that we may or may not need to be preparing the district for and informing folks about. So again, this is an RFP for that particular study.
Ms. Nyman.
I believe it's definitely got to be an error because it looks like we're going to be having the sealed bids received this Friday for this agreement.
Can you share with me where that, where you find that?
Page one. Page three.
Page one.
I don't think you want that to be February 28th.
Trying to find out where I see this.
It's the top paragraph.
Advertisement is right at the very top.
I see that. Yes, that is, that is an error. We'll need to change that.
Also, page three, top of the page.
Yep.
When is the date going to be?
Yep.
Those dates will be dependent upon when we can get it advertised, and then we will put the dates out from the point that we get confirmation from the newspaper when they can advertise the bid.
Typical RFP usually given about approximately three weeks. So I would estimate we'd be changing that date from February 28th to March 28th is when we would do, we would do that. So I, what I can do is notify the board as to what, once we get an indication on when we can advertise this and the dates with the newspaper, I believe we probably would be safe at the March 28th, but could notify them. Outside of that, is there anything else that you see? Okay. Yeah, my apologies for that. We will make sure we correct that. I would still ask for approval this evening so we can move forward, and I would alert the board as to what that change would be in terms of its date.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, did we do the motion on that?
Yeah, it's up on the board.
I mean, do we, do we first and second the motion? Okay, I missed that. Item C, seeking approval this evening for the Boyertown YMCA camp program agreement for the 25-26 school year. I believe I shared back with the board some information with regards to some of the questions that came up with that. It is a 3% increase from last year. And again, if, if so approved, this could run out of Boyertown Elementary School. I know, Ms. Nyman, you had brought that up. Ms. Dieroff brought that up in terms of that question. If the board so chooses to move forward in the future with the Boyertown Elementary project, we would need to work with the YMCA on licensing for West Middle School in the future. Right now, they do not have a license for West, but it would be impacted during the 26th and 27th school year. However, for this particular contract, it should be in the clear.
So we didn't change any of the verbiage. If we need to use that, they said they would work with us, from what I read.
They said they would, yes.
I would, but we don't have anything in the contract.
Well, there was not going to be any need for any changes for this particular summer with regard to Boyertown Elementary School, based on the timelines that we've been provided. So there really isn't any need to change any language in it for this year. For next year, we would need to adjust that and work with them on a different license.
As my recall on this, Boyertown is overseeing in some of the work that gets done there in the summer because of the kids being there. Like, I don't think the floors are being taken care of like they should be. Can we check on that?
You can certainly check on that. I have not heard anything in regards to that feedback. Explain that again, about floors that are being done, that when the camps in there?
The floors being taken care of because they're in there. They can't do the necessary maintenance to them.
Yeah, that, that always gets adjusted a little bit later, right, once the camp is done, so that those floors, I can make sure that, I touched with Mr. Shield to make sure that we have that process in place.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item D, we have the 25-26 BCIU Early Intervention Lease Agreement for Washington Elementary School. If you recall, the IU does lease and rent out that particular room each and every year. There is a 3% increase established into this contract for that lease.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Seeking approval on item E, the BCIU 25-26 mandated school district services budget as listed.
Brophy, second.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item F, we are seeking approval, as reported and presented at our last meeting, of the Senator Muth grant approval for the AEDs listed inside the contract.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And lastly, item G, personnel. Mr. Hahn, if you would, just please indicate to the board prior to us bringing this to the floor, any updates with regard to personnel that they are seeing this evening?
Sure. The one main entry on the personnel agenda is our new payroll and benefits specialist. She will be starting, our hopes is that she will be starting in the next week to 10 days. We vetted her through an interview process that Mrs. Denneke and her staff were present for, comes to us with, I won't say extensive payroll and benefits experience, but did work in school systems in the state of Florida for the last seven years.
So we, administration is recommending approval of personnel items listed.
I'll second. Got it, Ms. Nyman.
With the rescinding of these two people, have they gone through any of the processes so far, and is there a cost to the district for that?
Neither of those individuals came in to do pre-employment paperwork, so other than the advertising and the cost to interview, time away to interview, that's the only cost that was associated with them. Thank you.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
There's no one signed up for comment period number two at this time, so we go to board comment. Mr. Updegrove?
Uh, yeah, I guess, I think it's Dawson already left, and I know the, at the meeting we had at the BCTC, it was really good that all the rest of the students are really getting involved behind that program up there.
Yeah.
So it was really good. I mean, her accomplishments really got everybody else revved up about it. So I thank her.
Ms. Nyman.
Thanks to Allison and Liana for their report, and I'm looking forward to seeing the musical.
Ms. Dieroff.
I'm going to bring it up again. I had asked before, we had pictures donated to us for in the boardroom, beautiful pictures of children, and I don't know what happened to them. I'd like to see them put back up in the boardroom, or at least find out where they are. They were donated for that purpose. I asked about it before, and I think someone said they think they know where they are or whatever. I'd really like to see them put up. And the other thing is, there's a committee for kindergarten, and I was inquiring why board members weren't on there, or if we could have board members on that committee.
Well, this is really an investigatory committee that we put together. Mr. Stout has led that internally with all stakeholders inside. We plan to present back to the board those investigatory components and pieces to the board, and the board at that time can then direct us as to what additional steps or expansion of that committee and things that you're thinking about. This is really an action group intended to collect all the information that we can internally to be able to deliver out an exact presentation to you and as a board in total. So I would ask for the opportunity for Mr. Stout and his team to complete that study, bring that back to you in early April, and then the board in total can make some decisions as to what next steps would be.
Is that all, Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Okay.
Allison and Liana, thank you again. Did a great job. You guys are falling in really good with this. As far as Abigail Dawson, totally blown away. Like I said earlier, very mature. And I did find out that she was student of the year, and we had put some other people in there. And I was wondering why our other people didn't get it, but now I can see why. So we'll just re-nominate the people for next year. But yeah, Abigail's going to do one heck of a job. Thanks.
I have no comments.
So that takes us down to the upcoming meeting dates. We do have two listed there for the board and for our community. Our March 11th Committee of Hull will be hosted at Washington Elementary. That will begin at 7:00 PM, and then we will be back March 25th here in the boardroom at 7:00 PM for our legislative meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Nyman moves.
I'll second.
Meeting adjourned.